All right, good evening and welcome to the January 7th meeting of the Hickory City Council, the first meeting of 2025. I'd like to say Happy New Year to each and every one of you at this time. I would ask that if you're able to please stand, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask my fellow councilman and pastor of Clinton Tabernacle AME Zion Church, Reverend Dr. Anthony Freeman, to ask our invocation. I would ask that you remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we say thank you for your love and your grace, and thank you, God, for allowing us to get through the Christian calendar of the Advent season as we celebrated your birth. I want to say thank you for what Advent represents, hope, love, joy, and peace, which I pray, God, that you would continue on blessing this community in this city with your presence and certainly with your guidance. Father, we're thankful to allow us to enter into a new year. We pray, God, that you would hold this city close. And for all of us as city leaders, God, I pray that you would always allow our hearts to be in alignment to your heart. Father, we always pray that you would give us wisdom, that you will always lead us in our decisions. It is in Jesus' name we pray and ask all these blessings. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're gonna start off this first meeting. Welcome, Councilman Seaver. We're gonna start off this first meeting of 2025, asking if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the council this evening. We always allow that opportunity at the beginning of each and every meeting. At this time, I would just ask if you would like to address the council, that you approach the podium, that you give us your name and your residential address, and that you limit your conversation to three minutes or less. So at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to address the council There doesn't appear to be anyone that would like to address the council this evening, so I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of our regular meeting of December the 17th, 2024.
Move approval, second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number seven is our reaffirmation and ratification on second readings. Once again, I'll entertain any discussion or motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number eight is our consent agenda. I'll ask if there's any member of council or staff that would like to have any item removed from the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. The consent agenda carries unanimously. Moving on to new business, we have one public hearing this evening. To introduce our first and only public hearing, I'll call on our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Gess, members of the city council, Mr. Swanson. The only public hearing tonight is consideration of the voluntary contiguous annexation of 5.789 acres of property located at 2056 Snow Creek Road Northeast Hickory, and it is owned by Juan Carlos Lemos Abara and his wife Mary Val Corosco Lemos, and will be presented by Planning Director Brian Frazier.
All right, all right, good evening, Happy New Year, Mayor, Council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Swanson, good evening. Again, Mr. Wood introduced the topic at hand, the current development, there's a single-family home, the property owner wishes to subdivide the property, basically do a lot line adjustment, it is considered a minor subdivision, into two separate and distinct lots and construct an additional residence on that parcel. Thank you, sir. You can see here where the parcel is located, it's within the Hickory ETJ, anything in the blue is within the city limits, the white is county, so you can see this parcel here is right, this is Snow Creek Road, and this was the Snow Creek subdivision that Mr. Vasquez had done, the first phase of that, 52 lots, this is slightly to the west, this one parcel Here you can see the zoning, again, the parcel in question, R1 to the west, this is county R20, and this is city of Hickory R2, where that residential development went in. This is the aerial ortho of the site, again, this is Snow Creek Road, 25th. So basically, the voluntary annexation petition does comply with all applicable state annexation statutes. We believe the adequate public services are available, according to the various department heads, and the annexation of the property would not cause public services to fall below acceptable levels. Based on these findings, planning staff respectfully recommends approval of the requested annexation before you this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Frazier? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, this is a public hearing. In just a few seconds, I'll open the public hearing, but before I do that, we would ask that anyone that would like to speak at the public hearing, that they would approach the podium, that they would state their name and their address. We will allow up to 15 minutes for anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this continuous annexation that you've just heard described by Mr. Frazier, and we will allow the equal amount of time, up to 15 minutes, for anyone present that would like to speak in favor. If necessary, we will allow up to five minutes for rebuttal and surrebuttal. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of the voluntary continuous annexation you've just heard described by Mr. Frazier. There doesn't appear to be anyone that would like to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. There doesn't appear to be anyone that would like to speak in favor. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion or discussion.
Move approval of the annexation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. That motion carries unanimously. We have two departmental reports this evening. To introduce our first departmental report, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Gess. The first departmental report will be discussed in a closed session, and if there's any action to be taken, we would come out and open session and do that.
Okay. Then I'll ask you to introduce our second.
So the second departmental report is year in review and the year ahead. In order to avoid a 10-minute meeting tonight, we pretty, pretty good, thanks to Yadeh Briana and Iris, presentation together. I did something, an abbreviated version of this in September, this is going over what has been accomplished this past year, as well as looking forward and getting ready for next year, or the year we're in right now.
This year.
This year. So it seems like we always have started with the bond projects, that we're gonna talk about those, but we're gonna talk about some other things first. The water resiliency initiative that we've undertaken, we talked about this at your last council staff retreat, this will be a main topic of conversation at your next council staff retreat in the spring. We've got a number of projects ongoing, so the city had a few years ago purchased the old Longview Water Plant, and we are in the process of selecting a design firm for upgrades that, to that plant initially, for additional storage. It's got a lot of good storage capacity there, it needs to be renovated, so that'll be a major focus initially. We have conducted and are, and are conducting a feasibility study for water interconnectivity to jurisdictions around us, namely, there's five or six jurisdictions that have water plants. If you know what happened with the hurricane in Morganton, well, they were not really connected to anybody, we're not, we're connected to Newton, but the major water suppliers aren't connected to each other, so that's where we're looking at. Is it feasible? You have to look at pressure and head loss and a variety of things to determine if it's feasible from a just doing it perspective and then the cost perspective. So we've gotten some initial numbers on that, so interconnectivity is gonna be a big conversation. One of the options is building a new second water plant, cities reach a size where it's, they need to have an additional water treatment facility, and also, we have one water intake, so pursuing a secondary water intake as a, as a backup is another item that is being looked at in terms of what's in that feasibility study. One of the projects that's budgeted, and we'll be selecting a firm to do this, Advanced Metering Infrastructure Project, this is how your meters, water meters are read, currently they're read, for the most part, by meter readers that we have on staff, we're looking at automating that, it'll either be, it'll be a combination of radio read and through the internet Wi-Fi connectivity, so there are options depending on what's available in terms of the, being able to read the meter electronically and remotely, what would be done, so we'll select that firm. That's probably a three-year build-out with all the city's water meters that we have, not only in town, but also outside of the city limits that we read every month. Utilizing water flow technology to detect leaks in our system, we don't have that right now, so now, if there's a major water leak, we can tell by the water levels in various tanks diminishing. Well, that's, then you have to go out and find out where the leak is. So getting technology in place that'll detect, like, increased flows in the system, so you can narrow down where the leaks are, particularly the major leaks, so that, along with the AMI project, would be a part of that, just utilizing a new technology. And developing a more data-driven capital planning tool for our water, capital water and wastewater infrastructure replacement projects, currently, we just do it based on where we know we have had issues in the system, it's, there are ways to be more scientific and specific about that with, with data. You still use that kind of intuitive knowledge about the system and where the problems are, but we're developing a new system that will leverage more data in identifying water and wastewater infrastructure replacement projects that need to happen. And as I move through this, just stop and ask questions or comments, you don't have to wait till the end.
It might be a good time, given the temperature, the forecast for the next few days, can you kind of explain the, the relationship between cold temperatures and water leaks in our system?
Yeah, so particularly when it's been warm and then you have a big cold snap, you know, the contraction of the, of the lines causes breaks, and particularly, we're, we're gonna see some of those, and this, and that's not unique to us, but the, the expansion and contraction of the lines, particularly with cold weather snaps, plays havoc in certain parts of the system, and it, a lot of that's not based on age, it's just based on a variety of other, other factors, but, but we will see those with this cold snap. And I know Will Hamlin's, you know, maintenance staff will be out there in the dead of winter in the cold fixing those. So that's, again, we'll talk a lot about that during the retreat and some other items, digging into some more, particularly on the water system side. We've got, you're familiar with these, two big FEMA projects should begin construction this year, so we've had flooding issues at two of our workhorse pump stations, Falling Creek and Snow Creek Pump Stations, so we applied for a FEMA grant to do some things to those pump stations that will prevent them, it won't prevent the streams from flooding, but it'll prevent the pump stations from flooding, so those are two major projects that we'll have coming in this year. Trivium Sewer, of course, Trivium development and putting infrastructure in is still in process, it's almost done, but the sewer project on the Trivium East side is, is complete, and that was a 50/50% partnership with Catawba County. So pivoting back to our sewer pump station, so the Moose Club Pump Station, which is across the street from Glen Hilton Park, down closer to the lake, it's, that is another workhorse pump station, so it has a tremendous amount of flow that comes through that, and we are working on a plan to determine how to divert flow from that pump station. That flow out of that pump station goes to North East Plant, we're gonna intercept flow coming to that station at various points and divert it to the Henry Fork Plant, and it's not a matter of upgrading that pump station because the lines coming out of that pump station just can only, you know, transmit so much wastewater, so, and if, by doing that, it also allows for additional growth on the west side of town, because right now it would be constrained due to the line size with that pump station, so that's gonna be an important project that we'll start on. And similar to that, we just completed the Murray Creek or Murray Basin Sewer Line Project, and that was, we were, for years, we have been sending flow, our sewer flow, some sewer flow, to Conover to be treated, so we did a project to divert that to our own Henry Fork Wastewater Treatment Plant, so we don't have to pay Conover, that'll be a project that pays for itself over a period of years, so that project was complete. And the work on the Microsoft Waterline and Sewer Line Extension Project on the design side is almost complete, and we'll send that out for bid for construction either this month or next month, there's still a few easements left to get, but that's a, those are a couple of pictures from the actual site, you can see the amount of earthmoving equipment that they have, they're grading five different pads for five different data centers, they'll just build one data center at a time, but they're grading all the pads, so there's a lot of work going out there, so our construction project related to the water and wastewater line extensions will coincide with them opening, being able to open that facility in probably two years, so that is an exciting project. Now, that, that project was funded, is a partnership with Catawba County, we also got some state money and some ARPA money to go into that, so that, it's not necessarily something that the taxpayers or the ratepayers are having to pay for. Springs Road Sidewalk Project's under design, so we're also purchasing right away, that'll take place this year, anticipate construction starting on that project next year, that's a major project, there's a lot of foot traffic along Springs Road, and there's no sidewalks, so from a pedestrian safety perspective, that's an important project. And we've talked about the roundabout at Sandy Ridge Road and 8th Avenue Drive Northeast, and that's in design and right-of-way acquisition through this year, then construction probably two years out on that. 17th Street Extension, if you bend down Clement Boulevard heading west, and if you look to your left, you can see the construction that's underway with that project, that'll be completed early next year. Aviation Walk Connector, that's a 10-foot wide multimodal path extension off the Aviation Walk, that's under design and right-of-way, again, this year, and then construction next year. And the Aviation Museum Connector is also a spur off the Aviation Walk, and it's in design and right-of-way acquisition this year and construction next year. All of those projects were funded, the majority, through grants and NCDOT allocations through the local MPO process, so we did really, John Marshall works hard on those, and we did really, he did, we did really well securing funds for each one of those, each one of those projects. A few more of those, and 8th, 9th Avenue Drive Northwest Road Extension and Trail Project, that's the piece that goes just beyond the entrance to the airport, that's under construction, should be completed next year. This isn't our project, the state project, but it's a big one, US 321 widening, of course, they keep changing the dates on this, so we'll see, but design and right-of-way are complete, and they anticipate beginning construction in 2026. 29th Avenue widening, there was a public, was that me making that noise? Okay. There was a public meeting in November on that, got a lot of turnout on that, so right-of-way acquisition in 2026, construction in 2029, and that's four-laning 29th Avenue between Springs Road and Highway 127. Another project that is ours is the Highway 70 Pedestrian Crossing Project, that's at Highway 70 and 4th Street, it'll be an extension of the Historic Ridge View Walk, getting across Highway 70, it's in design, and that will be bid out in the spring of 2025.
How long will that construction take?
That's not a very big project, I would imagine.
About nine months.
Nine months? Okay, about nine months. And there's just a picture of the 17th Street Extension Project, again, if you drive down Clement Boulevard, they've done a lot of earthmoving, and that's to connect 17th Street with Clement Boulevard, so there'll be a, a parallel road that ASU can connect to all the way down to Clement, that will have a 10-foot wide multimodal path as well. And that's the road work out just past the entrance to the airport, again, that's under construction. US 321 widening, for the Facebook junkies who say the Hickory doesn't line up with the, with the, that's because it's anticipating the 321 widening, and when the 321 is widened, Hickory will line up with the.
But DOT did help us out by trimming all those trees.
Yes, they did, and Steve Miller pushed them on that, so thanks to Steve.
The northbound lane looks pretty good, it's in the right place.
Yeah, you must be on Facebook. Let's see, and the Aviation Museum, that project is coming along nicely, hope to have an opening ribbon cutting, we'll say this summer, so, but it's coming along really well. The Aviation Museum folks are working to get their planes painted, so they'll look nice and spiffy when they're inside the museum, and CVCC is also working on the programming and curriculum classes that they're gonna provide in their section of the, of the facility. Lot of airport projects, this is just a sliver, so, let's see if I can do this. Yeah, so this is the east side of the main runway, the Aviation Museum's right here, so a 2,000, 200-foot expansion of the, of the runway, there's actually two phases to this extension, that's about a $20 million extension on that side, and then on the west side, a 400-foot extension, and that's another 20 million, because it also involves lengthening the taxiway and tying it in. Those are almost fully funded by the FAA, and that'll create a runway of just over 7,000 feet, and that's gonna be a multi-year endeavor, but we're excited about that. Tea hanger and box hanger development, so we had a little setback with our second round of tea hangers with the Hurricane Helene, but, so we're, kinda had to start almost from scratch, so, but that project's coming along, the second set of tea hangers at the airport, and as well as there's, there, we received funding to build another 12,000-square-foot box hanger, which is, are the big open space hangers at the airport, so we've got a partnership with Burke County, as, as we increase tax base at the revenue through additional aircraft, they, they remit to us about half of the increase in the revenue to go back into building hangers, so we've got a really good partnership with them, and that's paid dividends. We have a, go ahead.
Can you touch on demand for hangar space, just briefly?
Yeah, the, what's the waiting list for?
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, so there's, I think we have around 100 bays, so there's, you know, 50% of that on a waiting list that would, would like to have hangar space. So you're familiar with, you know, we had the $15 million expansion and renovation of the Convention Center, and with that, there's two hotels that are coming along, one kind of right behind the Convention Center and one off McDonald Parkway, so the hotel business, I'm on the TDA board, and their business is, is good, and there's demand for more hotel rooms in Hickory, and thus, more construction of hotels, so that facility turned, we did the ribbon cutting there, you saw that it's, it looks really good, Mandy Hildebrand and her staff do a really good job running that.
How many hotel rooms do we have in Hickory?
I used to know that. I'll have to get back to you on that. Not enough, so we need more.
They're coming.
Yeah. Bio solids facility, this is actually the city's single largest facility project expense-wise we've ever had. It, they're starting some testing, starting it up and, you know, fine tuning the workings of the bio solids process, processing process, and it should be fully operational by spring of this year, and we'll, we'll do a tour of, of that one as well, probably during your So we've, for years, we've talked about doing a Catawba River Environmental Education Center, we toured that facility that the city purchased at your last retreat, so we're in the, right in the middle of the process of selecting a design firm. We'll be working with the River Keepers, Duke Energy, ASU, and other partners in programming what actually will be displayed and how we'll have that facility laid out to really present, you know, the importance of the Catawba River and the, and the lake system to this region, and really use that as an educational tool for the importance of that river to Hickory and the Catawba Valley. This is not Trivium, this is Fair Grove Business Park, so that road to the right, funded mostly by the NCDOT and Appalachian Regional Commission Grant, enabled the construction of, if you've ever heard of Features, that's the building up front, and then they have a spec building up back, in the back, but that road enabled those two projects to take form, I think there's room for maybe two more spec buildings in there, so that was a really good project, again, funded through an ARC grant and the NCDOT primarily. Other city updates, we talked about Sandy Pines Park, the Northeast Hickory, for considering the density of population has a deficit in, in public parks out there, so we have an RFQ, we have, we've had the property purchased for decades, but we have an RFQ for design going out in the coming weeks. We're, we received what's called a Part F grant for help funding Phase 1 of half a million dollars, that was important, that was a good, good grant for that project. Miracle of Hickory, this, we did the first phase, you'll remember, we did ribbon cutting on the playground equipment, thanks to a contribution by the Rotary Club of Hickory, and we also received an Accessible Parks Grant of $400,000, and that's under design. That, that Miracle of Hickory Park is designed for all children, you know, if you have, you know, physical disabilities or whatnot, it, it really is open to children of all walks of life there, so that's a, that's been a really good park and project. Samuel, Samuel Davis, Samuel William Davis Senior Multipurpose Field in Ridge View, those improvements to that field are complete, we received a T-Mobile Hometown Grant for that, so that turned out really well, and that's right beside the Historic Ridge View Walk.
Can you expound on those improvements?
Uh, yes. Yeah, there were improvements to the, the field, laser grading to the field, and...
Laser grading the field and new bases and everything, we did the same thing.
Yeah. Yeah, PA system as well, yeah. So just, it needed, you know, a variety of things like that, so we utilized that.
What were some lighting issues as well with that?
The lighting was...
Was that prior to that?
I don't, I don't think the lighting was part of that.
Lighting's not...
Yeah. So that's a great asset, and, you know, we'd love for people to utilize that. I know when they have some of the, they move some of the downtown events to that location, and that's just been a great venue for that, you know, during summer. If you, you know, the streetscapes we have downtown, we got a grant to extend that, the concept of those street, uh, streetscapes, it's currently under design, we received a North Carolina Rural Downtown Economic Development Program grant, $850,000 to help expand the, the streetscapes downtown along Government Avenue and First Avenue Northwest, so again, that's under design, that'll be a next, this year, project late this year, first of next year. Seven Ten Park improvements, we'll be seeking public input related to applying for an Accessible Parks Grant, and the date's up there, two dates, get input on that, and again, that's another Accessible Parks Grant that we will be applying for, for that park. We also implemented a new, internally here at the city, a new city enterprise-wide financial and management software system, the one we had was, when I first started with the city in '93, it was brand new, and so it was time for an upgrade, and it's, you know, with any implementation, we've had bumps in the road, but staff is, Eric Rucker and Mitch Fryer and Kerry, they've all done a phenomenal job, and others in the organization getting that implemented, we've got about 20% left to go on that, but that'll make the audit process much easier for next year by having that implemented. So shout out to Steve Miller's crews, public services removed... Public Services removed over 19,000 tons of debris associated with Hurricane Helene. And if you'll just, there's a little taste if you remember what was around town. So his guys and gals did a phenomenal job. It took them months to get everything cleaned up. So that was a monumental task.
They did mulch supply.
Yeah, we'll have multi-year mulch opportunities for, for the public. And we actually had to, there was so much, we had to find to get another location to take some of the debris and pull. But that, that all worked out. So again, thanks to Steve Miller and his folks. And just a side note, so while we're having to work over, his folks are having to work over with debris removal, it was also in the middle of leaf season. So also a testament to Steve and his folks is that, you know, they've been on schedule with, with leaf season. They've changed the way they've done some things, which has made it much more efficient. So that, you know, went pretty seamlessly on scale of things considering how much debris there was to be removed. And just finally, you know, the bond update and nothing, you know, City Walk and downtown's been open. We have the ribbon cutting for the River Walk. We're still waiting on the railing to get the bridge open. That was another piece of damage, damage that occurred as a result of Helene. You know, between, obviously, the debris removal and all that and the hangars at the airport and the railing, we got off, we did okay. I mean, 20 miles more to the east would have been a different story with that storm, but we were very fortunate. We also did the ribbon cutting for the Aviation Walk, so that's, that's open. And the Historic Ridgeview Walk, we did ribbon cutting for that. So we've been cutting a lot of ribbons this year on these, on these projects. And the last one, we did the groundbreaking this year, but the Ole Art Walk is under construction. So that'll be the, the last of the trail projects related to the bond program. We'll continue to incrementally expand the trail program through grants like we talked about with the Aviation Walk and, and some others, but that'll be ongoing. And of course, part of the bond program too was the Trivium Corporate Center. That's been tremendously successful. There's just a few parcels left on the west side and then there's the one big one on the east side. Scott Millar and his folks are marketing that and showing the property out there. So that has been, and you may be hearing about some more coming up. I know he's been working on a couple in particular that would come to city council for your considerations. That's again, partnership with Catawba County, 50/50 on the expenses. And again, very successful project and partnership. And that's, that's it. I'd be glad to, you know, during the, again, for the retreat, your council staff retreat, we'll, particularly on the water and wastewater site, we'll dig more into that. That's going to be an ongoing topic of importance, not just for us, but for any others.
Any update on the dog parks?
Yeah, we're working on design. We're, to relocate the existing dog park and have two dog parks, one on the south side of town, one on the north side. On the south, south side is Hickory Optimist, on the north side is Bruce Meisner. So those are, those should be done, I think, this year.
I just wanted to say, because it's understated in the presentation, but we all know that most of those projects are either grant-funded, partially grant-funded, collaborations between the county are fully funded by, like, the whole Convention Center was fully funded by the hotel tax.
Yeah.
And so that's why we're able to do it, because staff is on top of the grants and making sure that everything we do really can incorporate outside funding.
We, we, our, the timing, they say it's better to be lucky than good. We were, the timing of us having these projects teed up and the amount of money at the time that was available, I don't know that we'll see all of that money continuing to be available. There are always going to be grants, but we've got some really big ones. It was, we did really well. I think we had, you know, obviously $40 million in bond program revenue and we leveraged that and got another $100 million in, in grants plus the partnerships that we did. There's, there were very few.
And the partnership and the citizens of Hickory.
Yeah, yeah.
Persistence of what started out as Tiger Grant, how many times did we go? Or, and it finally, finally.
Four, four times.
Four times, yeah.
But it finally came through and that, a lot to staff for managing all of these grants, looking for them, writing for them. It made a huge difference.
Yeah. And this was, you know, you have your everyday work that you do and then this was work on top of that. So we didn't really hire additional staff. So that's Steve Miller and Will Hamblin and John Marshall and Rodney, Rick and Yade and I'm missing somebody. I'll hear about it after, but they, we had a core group of folks that really took on a lot of additional work responsibilities and managing these projects because they just don't happen by them, by themselves, so.
They weren't even fully staffed.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm gonna, I, I can't wade into the details of this and I have to rely upon people that are a lot smarter than me and it gets conveyed to me. But something that's important to all of us and it's important to me is our IT security. I think that's something where we have made huge headway, not only last year but starting before, and it's because of Eric and his team. And I won't pretend to know the technical part of that, I don't want to know that, but thank you to them because I think that's a major accomplishment for, for the organization, the IT infrastructure and security. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that too because Eric and his staff, they've really upped the game on that. I mean, you're never 100%, but we're many, many, many times better now than we were before Eric got on board and, you know, he pointed out a lot of vulnerabilities and, and we've rectified that. And there's more, always, like I'm a race with no finish line with that. I mean, you're always making changes and, you know, making improvements because there's people out there trying to work around our systems.
Do you have any idea of jobs, of how many jobs are going unfilled at this point?
In the city?
Yes.
Uh, what are we, we were at.
175 to 80 in there.
We're full, so we're about 80% fully staffed.
Okay.
And it's, it's, it's public services, it's police and various other departments, but there's really certain pockets that have been really, you know, one of the things, you folks, this is not fair and it's oversimplification, but is, is, a lot of people don't want to work with their hands as much anymore. And a lot of the work that we have is out in the field and it's coming out when there's a broken water line and it's 15 degrees outside. I mean, so, but we, they've done a really good job. And also to that point, we really haven't added any staff to maintain these projects that we've brought online. Others over time. And Mr. Wood made reference to, he saw Santa chasing truck working on Sunday. I said, well, they're just getting caught up, not on residential side, it was on our commercial dumpster service. But, but they've done a really good job of making it work.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad to see that you highlighted the water and sewer aspect because I know a lot of times that doesn't get a lot of attention. When it does get a lot of attention is when it doesn't work properly or when you don't have water or when you don't have sewer. Because not only does that affect everyone in this room, but it affects every one of these projects that you've talked about. It affects our economy. Water and sewer, we, we are very fortunate in the city of Hickory here to be a regional water provider and to have that capability and to have the staff and the resources to be able to maintain that not only now, but for in the future. Of course, we're going to keep our eye on this IBT situation. I suspect that that'll be something that'll be going on for quite some period of time, but we're heavily involved in the discussions related to that as well as some of our partners and other metropolitan areas that are close by. But I think that water and sewer just doesn't get the attention or doesn't get the notoriety that it should. But to be able to provide that quality of service, not just to the citizens of Hickory, but to others in our surrounding area, that's a huge asset.
And the performance of our water plant won an award, it's multiple years, but I think at our next meeting, we're going to have those folks from, some of our people from our water plant here to, for you to do a.
Nothing, nothing works without water and sewer.
Would it be fair to say that Microsoft would not be here if it were not for our, how robust our water system is?
Yes.
And not only, not only Microsoft, but I think Apple and Google, even though they're not in the city of Hickory, I know, and not just those examples, but when we look in at industries coming to Hickory, water and the availability of water and the quality of water is high on their list.
Yeah. And I related to Apple, you know, Apple, Siri lives in Maiden, but she drinks city of Hickory water.
There you go.
Well, I would say a lot of us drink city of Hickory water. And, you know, the folks that maintain that, it's a, it's a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week, 365-day-a-year job. And we don't always recognize that, like I said, until it doesn't work properly or you have a problem. And they do a great job of that. All right. Anybody else got any comments or anything they'd like to add? I know that, I know that you didn't hit everything.
No, that's a good point.
That was good.
There's, there's much more, but I didn't, that was a 30-minute presentation, so that was probably enough. People wanted to hear from you.
Can you, can you give us a real brief synopsis on where we are with building permitting, residential and business or is that, is that something?
Well, the last, I can tell you the last typical, you know, year, pre-bond program, we were doing between 60 million and $100 million of building permitting a year. The last three years, we've done over 250 million each of those years and we're on course. We'll see where we end up. We're a little bit behind that now, but it fluctuates. But we're, our building permitting activity the last four years has exceeded what, way beyond what our average has been. And a lot of that has been a result of the bond program and the desirability that, you know, folks want to live near that and enjoy it and, and that's had a big impact on it.
All effects our economic development. Some of us attended the, the groundbreaking today at Water Burger. They've got, let's see, I think we're the 17th state and we have the potential to be the first one in North Carolina. They're doing eight in North Carolina and we're, we're potentially going to be the first one. So there's all kinds of excitement going on. All right, anybody else? All right, next thing on the agenda is appointments to boards and commissions. I'll ask if anybody on council has any appointments they would like to make this evening. We have a few vacancies, not, not very many, but we do have a few. As always, if there's something you're interested in, please get with one of us and we can certainly help you to navigate what it takes to get on a bond or a commission. We have some bond and commission members, both past and present, present in the audience today. And we just want to always give them, tell them thank you. Those positions are voluntary and they, they do a tremendous service to our community and to our council and we appreciate their service. All right, any matters not on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other comments? Anybody on council?
The burger was good.
The burger was good.
It was delicious.
Yeah. First, my first Water Burger.
Yeah.
All right. I'll make a motion that we go into closed session per the items listed on the agenda, approval of closed session minutes from December 17th and consulting with our attorney in reference to some issues that we have. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right, we'll return to council chambers and take any action as needed as a result of the closed session. We want to thank you for being here this evening.